Hello everyone, I'm Catherine Mortensen and welcome to an Alec TV video recording. I'm Catherine, this is Bill Ashworth, we're both with Public Affairs. And what we want to talk to you about today is the 90,000 local school board seats across the country. Just last week, we saw seats flip in Missouri, Wisconsin. And normally, we don't, Bill, talk about local school boards as like being national news. But in this case, something exceptional is happening across the country. And I think all of you out there who have been following events in Virginia are aware that there's sort of this parent-led revolution. And I want to share with you, before we bring on our guests today, they are three newly-elected members of the Manitowoc, Wisconsin School Board. Before we bring them on, I want to share with all of you a tweet that came out from a state representative in Wisconsin back in February. And I think you will understand exactly what we're talking about here today when you see this tweet. This is from Lee Snodgrass. She told parents, "If parents want to have a say in their child's education, they should homeschool or pay for private school tuition out of their family budget." Now, to be clear, that tweet was almost immediately removed for obvious reasons. So we want to bring on these three newly-elected members of the Manitowoc School Board. And Bill, I'll let you welcome them and we'll bring them on to the screen here, guys. Welcome, Tony, and we have Matthew Phipps and Matthew Spalding. We're grateful for your time here today. And Bill, do you want to just start it off? Just you and I are both parents, we both have kids. I know mine are in the public schools here in Northern Virginia. So I've been in the thick of a lot of what's happened over the past year or so during COVID. Has your experience been?
Yeah, I mean, first of all, Matthew, Matthew and Tony, congratulations on your great win on election night.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, just well done. You know, as I think, as I mentioned, as Catherine alluded to, our family's from Northern Virginia. We, we kind of, I mean Loudoun County is right in our backyard.
Yep.
And it was really, really interesting. And I'm interested in hearing if we kind of shared a common experience here in addition to your guys' backgrounds. But, you know, the lockdowns happened, the kids went into remote and virtual learning. Parents started to get an insight into what their children were being taught, you know, how their teachers were performing. And that, that might have been like one of the silver linings of the lockdown is that, at least in Loudoun, parents got a little bit more insight into their school curriculum. In Loudoun County, the parents, you know, had some problems with that. They showed up to the local school board meetings. And they were really sort of met with a really significant degree of resistance. As you know, this, you know, this resulted in a letter from the Department of Justice, you know, referring to a lot of these parents as domestic terrorists. There were protests, I mean, it made national news. And here we are, November 2021. And, you know, Republicans sweep all the executive offices on the ballot on Election Day. Glenn Youngkin is the new governor, Jason Mayares is the new Attorney General in Virginia, and Winston Sears is the new Lieutenant Governor. So, you know, this, this was clearly, you know, a snowball effect. This is something that resonated with voters. It's something that really, really resonated with parents. And it's super, super interesting that this is apparently not limited to Northern Virginia and the state of Virginia. This is something that obviously happened all across Wisconsin. Waukesha had elections, I believe. Menominee Falls, Republicans and conservatives were elected to the school board. And then it's you guys. So, I mean, tell me about your background. I mean, how was the experience that I just described to you similar to what you guys saw in Manitowoc County? Is it different? What got you engaged? And how did you get to where you are now?
Go ahead, Tony.
Yeah, so thank you for that runway. And, you know, for me personally, you know, the thing that really got me more paying attention to what was going on in the schools was the COVID restrictions. You know, just watching the masking measures that were going on for as long as they had, particularly in our area where there were other schools that, you know, eased back on them much sooner. And then to see the public schools continue to, to really, you know, push them as hard as they did was frustrating. And then going to board meetings and getting more involved. And then just seeing, you know, really just the lack of, you know, empathy from the board that was there, almost a sense of elitism, like they, they just knew better than us. And, you know, I found that to be, you know, pretty frustrating as a taxpayer. You know, that obviously got me interested. And then, you know, in our particular district, the performance was another issue. So that really got me looking more into how the school district has performed. And here in Manitowoc, it's been a steady academic decline since 2015, which is, you know, another big issue for all of us. We just want our community to get moving back in the right direction. So those are really the big drivers for me initially. And, you know, obviously, a lot of our community agreed with the way we felt about that.
The reason why I got involved personally, it was the disconnect between the real world and the classroom world. I own a construction company myself, and I've worked in the industry for about 13 years now. We've been hiring young youth apprenticeship men. And the skills that are needed to be productive members of our community, I feel have been lacking, and I know our community will agree to that. Seeing that for the last few years in the industry and then hearing what is coming out of our schools, it's been a big disconnect. So I've been trying to say, hey, we have a problem. Let's admit to it. Let's figure out how we're going to solve it as a community. And that's made me want to serve our community to try to bring up our scores and our performance so our children are prepared for the workforce.
For me, it was all to do with my daughter. She's 12 years old now and going to the middle school here in the public school district. She was born in Arizona. I have a law enforcement background in Arizona. And when she became old enough to start going to school, I just decided that it was best for her that she got the education that I did because I'm originally from Wisconsin. So we moved back up here. And I figured this is going to be the best suit for her. And the more and more I got involved, as she started getting older and going through the grades, and I started paying attention, and then COVID came around. That was a big driver for me because of the virtual learning, made things hard for a lot of parents at home. And then when they did finally go back, they were stuck with these masks for an entire year. She was getting rashes on her face. You know, it was, it was something that I had to step up as a parent and as a community member. And I felt that it was, it was my duty to do so. So started going to the meetings and paying attention. And it just seemed like it was a sounding board for the public input, in my opinion. People would go there and they would, they would make their case, state their case on the public input, but never receive anything back. They would never get any type of response from anybody. And there's a lack of communication between the public, the taxpayers, the parents that fund the schools to the actual school boards and the superintendents. It's almost like that's their little nugget that they give us to go there and state our complaints, but then never really care what happens or what, you know, what they say. So that made me frustrated. And at that point in time, I decided right then and there to run. And I announced it during, during one of my public inputs. And it had a pretty good, it was received really well, so I continue with it. And I met up with these two fine gentlemen and brought together by a lot of things in common, hard workers, Christ, and we, you know, we took it from there.
I'll just react real quick, Matthew. I love what you said. And I can totally relate, that idea of you, parents, you go to the school board, you make your case, and it's like a brick wall. We saw that here in Northern Virginia. The school board members would basically just stare, stare us down, not give us any answers. We would stand there and you would be so frustrated. And I love, Matthew, also, you and I talked a little before we went on camera. You are currently attending a community college, you're getting a technical degree. And that makes you so relatable. You're just sort of an average Joe, would you not say? And I feel like that's who is taking back our school boards, are just regular folks who, like you said, have been silent for years. And now we're saying, wait a minute, what is really happening here?
Right. When I moved back up here, I had entertained going back into law enforcement. But to be honest with you, at this day and age, it's just not a desirable job anymore. And they're, you know, they're not getting the respect that they deserve. So my dad worked in a paper mill his entire life for 42 years. And it was a good, good, honest living. And that's what I decided to do. I was going to go work in a factory. I did, and then ended up actually coming to work in Manitowoc here for Parker Hanifin. And they're putting me through school for the apprenticeship and the electrician program. I'm a mechanic now and an electrician, I guess. And I love my job, I love fixing things, and yeah, I'm an average, regular Joe.
You know, I mean, Matt, one of the things, guys, that I was interested in, I pulled out my map. I went to Manitowoc County. And, you know, granted, there's a lot of different towns, a lot of different people in Manitowoc County. But, I mean, this is, this is a county that went for Donald Trump by 23 points. This is, this is not, this is not a blue county, right? I mean, this is, this is a red county.
I'll be honest with you, I believe that the demographic, I agree with you on that, but I also believe that within the last couple of years, the demographic has changed quite a bit. There's a lot of new people moving into town, it seems like. So, and in my opinion, probably wouldn't have been the same results if the election was held today.
Well, that's interesting because that's a pretty quick turnaround. To go from a plus 23 Trump county to like a single-digit, like marginal county. And you may not, I know you're probably not going that far, but I see what you're saying. I mean, that was what surprised me. It's like, I mean, I could almost understand sort of the dynamic in Loudoun County, which, which I think is like a plus 20, like Biden county. But when I saw like the same reaction that you guys were getting when you went to your school board meetings in a red county like Manitowoc versus a county like Loudoun, I thought to myself, wow, is this just sort of like endemic of school boards everywhere? It's just like, just like, do school boards just routinely, regardless of the county that you're in, are just plainly dismissive of parents? And they just don't want to hear from them?
You know, I think part of the issue here, at least from what I gathered watching the school board, is just that for too long, a lot of parents and conservatives just weren't engaged in the process, right? And, you know, so as a result of that, you just had, you know, really decades of, you know, of time that we just kind of sat by, you know, most conservative folks are, you know, are busy working, right?
Right.
And, you know, there wasn't, in my view, there wasn't representative, representation, right, of the community? When you look at, you know, the way our community's set up is, you know, as far as, like you said, like 60% voted for Trump, but we didn't have that representation on the board, right? As far as that conservative thinking goes. So I think really just this whole thing with COVID really got a lot more people looking at what was going on in the schools where they weren't paying attention before, just because, and, you know, really shame on us, right? You know, we just kind of should have gotten involved sooner. But I think that's a big part of it, is just that people weren't paying attention before. And now they're, they're more aware.
Well, I want to just ask, I talked to Tony, to you last week. And the first thing you said to me, when I said, hey, we would like to bring you on to talk to Alec, you said, well, first of all, who is Alec? I said, we're the nation's largest sort of volunteer organization of state lawmakers. We also have local lawmakers as a part of our group. And we try to work with them to promote free market, limited government, federalist-type ideals. And you said, well, that sounds good. You said, I primarily don't want to come on and be partisan. You said, I was not elected on a partisan basis. And many of the people who voted for me are, you know, don't care one way or the other about politics. And you said, I want to make sure I'm representing everyone in my community. Will you talk to me a little bit about that aspect to your elections?
Well, sure, yeah. And, you know, school board is a nonpartisan race, right? And I think it's important to have different viewpoints, you know, particularly at the board level. You know, ultimately, everyone in our community should rally around wanting better schools, especially when you look at, you know, where our academic performance has been in recent years. You know, Manitowoc is in the bottom 8% of our state right now, looking at the overall accountability scores that are put out by the Department of Public Instruction here in Wisconsin. And, you know, not that long ago, we were doing a lot better, right? So this community used to be known for the quality of education. You know, I was told back in the 80s, I think Ronald Reagan recognized Manitowoc for the high standards. And, you know, we've seen a pretty, pretty steep decline since then. And, you know, there's, there's positives, you know, that we can build upon, but we certainly have a lot to improve as well. And that's really what our, my focus has been around. That should appeal to everyone, right? Regardless of your personal politics. And, you know, the way I look at it is, you know, we want a diverse board. We want people with different views and opinions and backgrounds. And I think we have that now. And, you know, ultimately, it's up to us now to work together to, to figure out, you know, how do we improve our performance moving forward?
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was kind of like what I was wondering. So, you know, so here we are. You guys, you guys won your races, right? You've, you know, you've, now you're members of the school board. And, you know, I absolutely hear, again, it's so interesting because this is like exactly, this is like exactly what we heard in Northern Virginia. And it's interesting, you had these parents, if I could just digress for a second, guys, you're probably familiar with this. You had these parents who like lived in the DC suburbs. And they, a lot of them really moved out to Loudoun County because of, they had just a little, a lot more elbow room. I mean, you know, if you get a lot more with a lot less out there. They thought the schools were really good. And then they started to do the virtual learning and they started to hear like what was being taught in the class. And they said to themselves, whoa, wait a minute, we made this huge life change to move out to Loudoun County. And schools aren't as good as we thought they were. Or they're, as you said, Tony, they're not as good as they had been. So, you know, what do you do now? I mean, how do you sort of change that? How do you, how do you right the ship? What are, what are the steps that, you know, you know, now that you guys are school board members, what are the sort of policies you need to implement? I mean, is it, yeah, I'll let you guys just take it from there.
Yeah, cool. So to begin, what we don't want is divisiveness. And I feel that our community has been pulled bipartisan, not by us three. But the way you fix that is you come together as a community to solve the problems that are directly in front of us. You use your real-world experience to solve the issues. How you do that is just by working together with the teachers, with the administrators, and with the parents. And I think that that's been lacking, obviously, in the last decade. You give a voice to the people, and that's, that's how we got elected, is giving the power back to the parents and back to the students so that we can all be heard and not have the divisiveness that's pulling us apart. We decided to run together after the incumbents said that they were going to run together to re-get elected. And we said, well, we're three fathers that have been going to school board meetings, not happy with what's been going on. So why don't we unite under the voice of the community? And how we're going to solve this in the future is our community. Moving forward, we're going to try to earn the respect of the people that didn't vote for us because we want to, we want to solve these problems. We don't want to just talk about them. We want to work together with every, every community member, stakeholders, teachers, administrators, parents, to actually solve them. And it's not going to be easy, but the only way we're going to get it done is if we all work together and hear each other's perspectives. We will not cancel each other out. We hear it too many times that when somebody doesn't like what they say or hear, they cancel their opponents. We're actually wanting communication. We're going to have in-person meetings as long as we're on the board. I know that. So it's how we work together in the future from now, which we did through our campaign, but now we're excited to do that with the existing board members and to hear the community input.
Yeah, that's, that's just great stuff, Matt.
And with the community input.
Go ahead, Matthew Spalding, did you want to answer that question as well?
Sure. I just wanted to add to him, here's what he stated, because I agree with everything you said. As well as with that community input, I think it's very important that we also take that information and who gave that information and what we're going to do with it. And even if it's not a direct talk back and forth at the board meeting, we need to be able to respond to these people and let them know that we actually heard what they said. And, and we're, you know, what we're going to do or what we feel. Or maybe it's against our beliefs, or maybe we don't think that way. And we will be honest with them. That's the one thing that we've always tried to stay, stay to the facts and be honest with people. So definitely step up the communication between the board, the administrators, and the public.
Yeah, and I mean, it sounds like that's exactly, well, and that is the opposite of what you encountered when you guys went to the school board and what sort of caused you all to get into the races because people weren't listening to you. They weren't listening to parents. They were basically telling parents to, you know, not in so many words, you know, sit down and be quiet. And, and.
We actually had one almost to say that.
Wow. And so, and so how would you, how would you react to, you know, to Representative Snodgrass's tweet?
I would say that the people of this country are speaking up right now. And we will get what we put in for the next however more years that we're going to keep fighting to represent our country. And it's the voice of the people that will get us through this. And that's to look forward to anybody else that wants to get involved. It's, it's how we unite for the people that will bring us together to solve these problems. Divisiveness will be the end of our great democracy if we let it happen. The, how we fix that is we unite from hard-working individuals all across this country. Because that's, that's the voice. We want the, we want our country to be represented by the hard-working individuals that will take up the responsibility of the previous generation.
I would also remind Representative Snodgrass that she was elected by the people. And those are the exact parents that she upset.
Yeah, yeah. You know, it's interesting that, one of the things I found interesting about the tweet is that, you know, unfortunately, not every parent who has an interest in their child's education can afford a private school or can afford to stay home and teach their child because they're working one or two or three jobs. So, I mean, I think, Tony, you know, you made the point earlier about, you know, this disconnect with, between, you know, you know, the folks and the ruling class. And that's, that's what I took from the tweet that was, that was sort of interesting to me. The other thing I wanted to, you know, ask you guys, because again, I imagine this was, this was obviously a process, right? This was sort of, you know, insight into the curriculum, going to the school board meetings, feeling shut down, coming together and saying, you know, the three of us are going to run, getting involved. It's had taken place over a long period of time. And I mentioned what happened in Waukesha. I mean, I'm sure you guys know that in Kenosha County, Samantha, I want to say her name is Kirk Kirkman. She's now the new county executive. I may be mispronouncing her last name. First time, I think, Kenosha County's ever had a Republican county executive. You had what happened in the Elm Brook School Board elections, in Brookfield, Wisconsin, in Menominee Falls. I may be sort of mispronouncing that as well. And then you had these school board races in Missouri, too. Did, did you guys have any communications with like these other folks in Wisconsin who ran for school boards? I mean, were their stories similar? Did you, did you find commonality with those, with those candidates as well? You know, leading up to and including on Election Day, were they seeing the same things that you were seeing?
Yeah, I think so. There's a, even in Two Rivers, which is really close to Manitowoc, they had a couple of good people get elected as well, too. We were, I was in contact with a wonderful lady by the name of Nicole Benteen that, who ran there as well. And she was elected, too. I do know that just south of us here, maybe 25 minutes, there was three moms that were elected, a conservative sweep as well. So it, more than what you're just saying there, too, it's quite, it's quite extensive in Wisconsin.
But, yeah, I think those were the moms on a mission. Those were like Nina Christiansen, Chris Stovland, and Shelley Holtzman, who I think ousted two incumbents on the Menom, I'm probably mispronouncing it, Menominee Falls School Board.
Okay, I thought it was Sheboygan, but it might have been Menominee Falls, we're both south of us.
Yeah, and you guys, you guys know the state and the region better than I do. I'm just.
Well, yeah, and they, they did well as well, too. But we definitely wouldn't have been or able to do this without the support of this community. We've had a ton of people helping us and they're really supportive. I think our community is really close, tight-knit. There has been some divisiveness, but, you know, we're going to do our best to pull it together.
Well, I just love your message of just sort of being inclusive, ending the divisions, and really putting the children first. And I love, I mean, I am a parent, I can totally relate to what you're saying. I'm just so grateful that you all stood up and you're, you really, I mean, I'm 2,000 miles away in Northern Virginia, but I feel like you are representing me. Like, your message is exactly the message that I want, you know, to get to my local school board members. Bill, before we close it out, did you want to bring up any of the Alec Model Policy? So what we do here at Alec, like I said earlier, is we work with our policy experts and we work with partners at the state level, in the private sector and the public sector. And we work with, to develop what we call Model Policy, which is essentially policy that has been fully vetted, that underlies, you know, the principles of the free market, limited government. And then we make those available to lawmakers throughout the country. And we do have policy in the area of education. It's sort of what we consider like our best practices. Like, if lawmakers in Wisconsin, or even at the school board level, want to look at an Alec Model Policy on education, they can pull from it what they think is relevant for their community and say, oh, I like this, or maybe let's pull from this. We have some, a great model policy that I think addresses some of the things a lot of the parents have been concerned about over the past few years.
Yeah, and gentlemen, like one of those is what we call the American Civics and History Act, which simply requires public schools to make all their instructional materials used in social science courses available online for parents to review. Just like simple transparency, whatever you're teaching, just want the parents to know what it is, right? I mean, how could, how could anyone object to that, right? But you'd be surprised.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree with you. Or I think another issue in our district has been transparency. You know, you mentioned curriculum, but in other areas as well, you know, just, it's very difficult to find anything on goals and things like that, you know, which I think should be transparent to the public. I think every, you know, parent and taxpayer has the right to know, you know, what are, what are we trying to accomplish as a district? Where are we moving towards? And, you know, so that, that to me is definitely something that we want to advocate for strongly. You know, transparency in all areas. You know, we look at this role as, you know, being public servants. We're here to serve our community. And I think people are entitled to know these things and also know that their leaders are working, you know, towards something that's going to improve our outcomes.
Well, we're running up against the clock here. We know that your time is limited and ours is too. So just before we close it out, is there any last thing that you all want to say? Maybe a message to other parents around the country or anything at all? I'll give you the last, the floor here.
Yeah, I'd like to, just real quick, encourage other parents, you know, that are concerned to step up and get involved. I mean, really, it just got to the point where I felt that if I didn't get involved, like who would? And, you know, I knew what I'm capable of, and I know the guys are like-minded here, the Mets. But, you know, be prepared for the fight. You know, it's our opposition, you know, they don't, they like to claim the moral high ground, but then they, they fight dirty. And then when you hit them back, then they start, you know, whining about stuff. So, you know, I just wanted to be, you know, upfront with people and just be prepared for that. It's a long process. The campaign process is very long and draining, at least it was here in our community. But, you know, we're excited now that we're going to be in a position to really impact positive change for our students and community. And we're very much looking forward to that. But just be prepared for the work because it is, it is work. But we need good, good men and women to step up and serve.
I just wanted to add, also make sure that your wives and husbands are on board with you because they are also running this campaign with you. Pray for them and make sure that they're completely on board because when you're getting dragged through the mud, because, well, it doesn't matter how good of a person you are, they will, they will say something. And it's taxing on your family, it's taxing on your wife or your husband. So we wouldn't be here if we didn't have three absolutely perfect wives standing right behind us.
I'll say that if you're going to get into this, you need to be prepared to put yourself completely on the line, your reputation, your years of service in the community, because the opposition doesn't care. You have to be prepared to let it all out there. And the truth will guide you, no matter what you're trying to do. Make sure you follow the truth and make sure you have a light of hope and motivation to get you through the hard times because this was not easy. And the only way that we're going to solve this from a national standpoint is if the hard-working individuals of this country say enough is enough and unite and take back our place as a provider of just honesty and true transparency to our children because that's our future.
Yeah, guys, I just, I mean, God bless all of you. And I just, I just am so thankful that you would allow us to, that you would share your story with us and allow us to share your story with other members of Alec and legislators and, and the public. I just think it's, it's something that everybody needs to hear. And just from the bottom of my heart as a parent, God bless you all.
Yeah, same here. You all are my heroes. Thank you for what you're doing. And please keep in touch with Alec. We'd like to be a resource to you if we can help as you're working to develop policies and make changes in your school district to improve transparency. So thank you, and thank you all for joining us, and we will see you next time. And we will see you next time on another Alec TV broadcast.
Thank you.